I'd like to change the agenda a little bit with permission of the board to let Dr. Hamilton come forward so he can get out here if he wants to. He can stay in the meeting.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to come give you a quick report update on Mountain Empire Community College. We are, we just finished spring semester and it's been a pretty good year at Mountain Empire Community College this year. In terms of enrollment, I'll give you an update on where we're at. We finished the year about 2% above last year at this time, which was a pretty good spring last year, too. So, we're maintaining our enrollment. When you compare it to some of the other schools in the region, Southwest Virginia Community College is basically even with last year. Virginia Highlands is down 6%, and Whitble is down 8.2%. Overall, the community college system in the state of Virginia is down 5.19% this year. So, when you look at Mountain Empire being up 2%, we're up about 7% over what the state average is. So, we're having a pretty good year. Just finished graduation Friday night. Over 500 students graduated this year. It's interesting to note that about 53 of those students were from the high schools and completed dual enrollment, either a certificate or an associate degree. Seven students completed an associate's degree at the same time they graduated from high school, and the rest of them got a certificate or general study certificate. So, dual enrollment is becoming a bigger part of our college every year. We're up to about 26% of our enrollments now in dual enrollment. We are up this year in the spring semester 22% over this time last year in dual enrollment. So, another good year. And that, and it's a great deal for the students and the families because they get their tuition at an 80% discount if they go while they're in high school. So, if you've got your kids or grandkids that don't want to get some college credit while they're in high school, you can actually complete an associate's degree because some students have done it. Looking at summer, we're still looking good. Right now, we're at 9.7% above last summer at this time. Give you an example, Southwest is up about 5, Virginia Highlands is up about 7, and Whitble's down 10. So, comparatively, we're doing pretty well. We were one of, by the way, five schools in the state of Virginia that were in a positive side at the end of the spring semester, and number three in terms of the amount of FTE that we were up. So, we had a pretty good year. Just a couple of other items that are of interest are technology programs at the college created and are starting to use what we call SPARKEY, which stands for solar-powered, alternative, renewable, clean energy. It's a trailer. You may have seen it if you're a graduation. We used it to power the speakers and the mics and everything up on the podium this year and the lighting. It'll generate approximately 5,000 watts of power from solar energy and stores it in batteries inside the trailer. And we used it to go around and introduce students to alternative energy sources, and we used it to power all the lights in the PA system in the music tent at Home Craft Days last year, and we used it to power the haunted forest activities last year. And that particular unit and the use of it received the first place award at the Virginia Community College Spring Conference up in Roanoke. And we were noted as the number-one use, innovative use of technology in face-to-face and online classroom use. So, nice little award there in recognition for Mountain Empire, number-one in the state on that. We also had a young lady from Wise County who qualified to participate in the NASA Scholars Program. Her name is Emily Hillstrom, and she was one of 200 students nationwide that was selected to participate in that. And from that five-week program that she participated in, there were just a few chosen that got to go, actually go to a NASA facility and get involved in some of the things such as she was, chose to go to the Stennis Space Center in April, and she worked on a team project that was mentored by NASA engineers. She attended briefings by the engineers and scientists. She toured the NASA facilities and competed in a rover competition and a lot of other neat activities. But she was one of very few in the United States that was chosen to participate in that, and that was another honor for Mountain Empire Community College to be recognized in that way. So, as I said, we've had a pretty good spring. I have also handed out the, our latest viewbook. It has a lot of facts and figures about our technical programs and our transfer programs at the college. You can look at that as you want to. I'm not going to read all that and go through it, but it's just for your information. But there are a lot of technical programs at Mountain Empire Community College that people don't even know we're doing. We've taken visitors through on campus and show them around our technology building and show them the laboratories with state-of-the-art computer-controlled lathes and mills and that sort of thing. They go, "Wow, we didn't know you had that." We have solar energy training programs. We have geothermal heating units that we're training people on. You know, so we're preparing students for probably some of the highest-paying, most-in-demand jobs in the country right now. Those technical positions, those two-year associate degrees in technical areas are probably more in demand than anything else right now. So, Mountain Empire is leading the way in that. And just one other thing, I just wanted to mention that as far as economic development goes, we have been participating with companies that are trying to come into the region or looking to come into the region, and our staff meets with them, does a presentation to those companies about what Mountain Empire has to offer. And we are currently doing training for the new business, TeleTech, in Duffield, at the Duffield Center, the Pioneer Center there. And we're also doing training for a new company that's coming into Wise, and we're going to be doing work with another company that's coming into Scott County in the near future. So, we're doing everything we can to provide a qualified workforce and to help develop economically our area. So, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Do you have any idea how many are doing the Ames through Lee County?
I don't know off the top of my head how many from Lee County, but I do know we have over 300 students on campus usually that are in the Ames Scholar Program at one level or another.
So, should I back?
But I don't know how many from Lee County are participating.
Maybe a lot is a good option.
That is a great option. I mean, you get a full ride through Mountain Empire, and if your score high enough and you want to transfer to UVA Wise, they will accept you up there for tuition and fee scholarship, or not fees, tuition scholarship. They gotta, they gotta pay fees up at UVA, UVA Wise. Still a great deal. Well, thank you for letting me go first. I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you for a good report. Okay. Public hearing. Purpose of the hearing is to receive public comment on the proposed, the proposed revision and amendment to the Lee County Comprehensive Animal Care Ordinance. A copy of the proposed ordinance revision and amendment is available at the Lee County Administrator's Office, room 1111, Lee County Courthouse. For more information regarding the ordinance amendment, contact Dane Poe.
Mr. Chairman, we basically mirrored every available statute in state code that localities can adopt. There is a provision, there's one section in state code that outlines which provisions we can adopt. There are a few others that by each, section by section, that will state that you're allowed to adopt it. But this ordinance contains almost every available statute that we can impose. One area that we did, is not included in here is leash, basically what you would call a leash law, which would require all animals to be kept on a leash. That's an option available to the locality, but it's not included in here because we do not have that at the current time. But, and I know it's rather lengthy. There were some sections that we considered keep dropping them out of there. They're a little bit lengthy, and they may seem a little over the top. After discussing it with the ACO, we felt that it was best for them and for the county to keep those provisions in there. It gives him a little bit more power to take some matters and deal with them rather than having to rely on state statute only. So, if you have any questions, I'll, I'll be happy to try and answer them. It's rather lengthy compared to what we had previously. I think before, we had about six pages. But our ordinance, for the most part, had not been revised since about 1962. So, it was very outdated. And there were a lot of new provisions of state code. There were some areas, I know it was Collins and Allen and Tim, a little bit of difficulty when they would go to court because our statutes were outdated, especially when you get in now to dangerous and vicious dogs, and all of that was having to be done strictly under state code. So, this will give them a little bit more, some tools to work with locally. I don't know if Allen's going to comment that he wants to make about it or not.
No. It's other than, it's nothing really, it's nothing new. I've had a lot of comments from the public. A lot of people thinks that it's something that's going to be imposed on, it's brand-new. It's not. It just, basically, instead of the state getting the money, the county's going to be able to benefit from it because I can write them all as county codes instead of the state code. It's nothing, nothing new.
Does any of differ, Allen? Any of differ from what it says in the state code versus county?
No. We, like Mr. Poe.
We just adopted it and put it under Lee County.
Yeah. We, we can't unless state code allows us. We, we can make ordinances more strict.
You can add to.
We can add to, but we cannot, I mean, and we, I, I included them in here verbatim out of, out of the state book, out of state code book.
Allen, why don't you just come on to the microphone?
That was my big question. Did you think different?
What, what did you say? Nothing more stringent. And like I said, there, there was a couple of provisions, one specifically on the leash ordinance that we, I did not include in here since we did not.
So, there's nothing in there about the lease?
No, there's nothing in here requiring animals to be kept on a leash. Now, the town of Pennington does have a leash ordinance, but the county does not have.
And the town of Jonesville?
Town of Jonesville does have one. Okay.
Is that included in our basically incorporated?
No. We, towns, because they are incorporated and they have their own code, their own powers granted by state code, I mean, our, ours has, we have authority to impose this in the unincorporated areas of the county. Now, if towns defer to the county for enforcement, then we enforce our company. But otherwise, we leave that to the towns. Like I say, even though, just like the leash law, we advised the town years ago when they adopted that, that we did not have personnel nor did we have the authority to enforce that within the town. Their officers can make those calls. We, we may have, we still handle strays, anything of that nature. But as far as their leash ordinance, that's strictly up to them to enforce that.
So, you recommend it?
Yes. Like I said, it's nothing, it's nothing different than what I've been doing for the past six years. Same codes that I go to court with every month. It just, it's like Mr. Poe said, it's just a tool for me that it's, it's an actual Lee County code, and the county can benefit from it instead of the state getting the money.
So, you're saying that the county will get the fines and then?
Yes.
Whereas before?
If I wrote it as a state code before, state gets it.
Okay. Anybody else got any questions? I think it, we'll get you back up there in a second.
Open the floor for any public comments?
Yeah. Open the floor for anybody else's comments or questions. If not, we'll close the floor. Open the, the board up here for any other comments or questions. Okay. Close the floor up here. If we want to take any action tonight on this as far as a vote, vote, nay or yea.
I'll make a motion. We said the ordinance.
I'll say. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The ordinance, it has been accepted. Okay. Next thing on the agenda is department reports. Let's get out and back up.
For the month of April, I received 270 calls at the pound. Eighty-two calls came in through dispatch, Lee County Sheriff's Department, for a total of 350 calls for that month. Sixty-three dogs were actually picked up, 26 of them being strays, 36 owner surrender, and one bite case. Their disposition and all that was, seven was reclaimed by owner, eight adopted, 42 was transferred to the rescue, and six were euthanized. We collected $100 in the holding fee that was collected back from owners that reclaimed them. We were averaging around $75 a month on that fee that y'all cashed for. $678.50 in fines and restitutions. We issued three sums, and several court charges are still pending in court. In reference to the, the last board meeting I was at where I was talking about the cattle and horse trailer, I did get a, one bid in writing, and the other one I just got by phone. I didn't get it faxed to me. I guess really the need for it is, I'll give you an example. Just dispatch week, we went on duty at 7:00 AM. From 6:00 AM till 7:00, we had a Lee County Sheriff's Department officer on the lower end of the county running a mule all up down the foreline. When we came on duty, he called us to assist him. We both had to go. We spent till 1:00. And we're supposed to open at 8:00 at the pound for the public till 10:00. But when you've got something like that, sometimes it takes both of us. And it took us five or six hours to deal with it because we had to leave, go borrow a trailer. Actually, Mr. Witt's brother had one. Problem with it is, is it's a flatbed trailer, and he'd actually purchased some racks that slid up and back at it. It wasn't put together, so we had to go put that together. And when we got back, they'd actually placed the animal into a farmer's field, and that was the biggest problem because it started fighting with his agriculture animals. So, we just went from one problem to the next. And I guess that's the biggest thing about it. A trailer would save us time trying to locate somebody to let us borrow one. And that's, that's the biggest thing with agriculture animals is they are so time-consuming, where we have to hunt somebody to let us borrow one, we have to hunt somebody that's going to hold them for us, which we actually have someone willing to do it on a part-time basis. He just said he didn't want to do it forever. Both of our trucks that we have, they're already equipped tow packages. All we'd have to do is purchase receivers, and when we get ready to go, we borrow a receiver whenever we do it right now. The only other thing besides that is, is if we do get a cattle-horse trailer, I'll still have to utilize that particular farmer for a while. I've thought about it, and I just discussed it with Mr. Poe several months ago about fencing off an area at the landfill behind the pound. I gave it some thought. I don't know if, if that would be the best idea or not. Maybe a building like Mr. Collinsworth has as he parks his equipment under, it's like a barn with a shed on each side. I've talked to several other animal control officers in the state. They utilize something like that. You can box it in, make your own stalls, store hay on one side because they're only going to be there a short time. If I pick an agriculture animal up, the code says that I have to have it before the judge on the 10th day, within 10 days. The judge will hear the case against it and decide whether or not to turn custody over to the county. And once that's dead, you know, it's, it's a short period of time that we would have to hold them if we do. I don't really know if we really want to expense and, I guess you'd say the trouble of keeping the fence up. If you put, if you fence in four or five acres, you've got to worry about a storm blowing a tree down on the fence, and then we'll have cattle running in the road. Or a, a little corral with a small barn would be a whole lot easier at the main time. We generally charge on the holding of agriculture animals $10 per day. I usually get that for the farmer that hauls them for us through the, through the court, especially if I had to seize one because of being cruelly treated, especially if the owner's found guilty. And so, however, I've never lost one because I just don't, I don't take them unless it's warranted. It's just, I try to work with people as much as I can until they won't work with me and I've got no choice. I wanted to mention the internet page. Mistress Hughes uploads the pictures for me of all the animals that we take in. I think she took on more of a job than what she thought it was going to be. We usually get around 230 views a week, which I think, you know, is pretty good for Lee County. It, it actually surprised me. Officer Witt, I think I included it last month in my report. He graduated the top of his class out of 26 officers at the academy in Salem at Cardinal Criminal Justice, and he actually won four awards in doing that. So, I was very, very proud of him and that. He's a, he's turned out to be a fine asset and a help to me. The only other thing that I wanted to mention to the board is we don't have a lot of time off myself and Officer Witt. We work basically 12 out of 14 days. We try to take every other weekend off, but it's 24 hours a day, seven-day-a-week job. The only thing I really, I wanted to talk to the board about is I'm, I'm sure the board has seen the budget requests that I've made. I wanted to explain some of that about the salaries. The reason I did is if I get called out at 12:00 at night, God's going to get comp time for it. But if someone calls in and they've got an emergency, generally, I want to speak to that person before I leave my house. A lot of times, I can talk to them instead of just running to their house, and it's really not an emergency, and I can get out of going and take care of it in the morning. But in doing so, sometimes I spend 30, 45 minutes on the phone in the wee hours of the morning. I'm not compensated for it, and neither is Mr. Witt. And like I said, we, like I said in the report, basically, those 82 phone calls last month, that's what that is. Eighty-two phone calls doesn't mean that I went out on the road specifically, but I talked to 82 different people from and through the sheriff's department where they'd called with a complaint, whether or not that means I left or not. And that was, I just wanted to explain to the board that one of the reasons why I'd asked for the salary increase was sort of a supplement to put in, we put in a few more hours, I think, than a lot of people realize that we do. If I get called out and go get home at 3:00, I'm still at the pound at 8:00. And like I said, I do appreciate the board. I appreciate Mr. Cole for getting us a workforce to repaint at the pound last month, or they did, and it looks very good. We had a little paint left over. We was going to use what was left over to paint our offices with it, and if we have any that needs a second coat in the back, we was going to do that with it. But that's about all I have. Any questions?
Anybody?
That quote on that trailer, Allen, can you get that to Dane? Because we'll be going over some budget stuff.
I see that. I always, I always got more and fax to me.
That same one that?
I don't know.
I think around 5,000, the one that was in the, is that about the same?
It is for a 16-foot cattle trailer. I backed a few of them, and I don't know if the board has or not, but a 16-foot's easier to back than a 14. And that's why I was going with a 16. And with the 16, you get what they call a split gate. You can't utilize that. You can't haul horses and cattle. I mean, you can put five cows or back a horse trailer, but you can't do that to horse without splitting them. You know, you may have a stud, you may have myers, you've got to split them. You may have two studs.
The middle out, exactly.
The one that Uncle Quinn's stated to me, you can split the middle or you can split it sideways. It works either way. And it actually has a place that you can split off for the tack room. It just, you can cut it all kinds of different manners with the one. Yeah. They were the cheapest one that I, that I talked to.
Any bayups?
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
What you do, Allen.
I do.
Take them both.
Okay. Josh.
Good evening. Right now, there's 164 people in the program. Of the 164, 121 participated for a total of 1,417 hours. They picked up 1,132 bags for an average of nine hours per person. Well, an average of 12 hours per person participating and 10 bags per person participating with a 73% participation. Seven people completed their community service. 14 was removed for inactivity or nonparticipation, and then I had 23 new people sign up. On, in April, I took the printer cartridges to Norton that I collect. I collect them periodically and take them. There's approximately about 225 cartridges that I took up there, so that kept those out of the landfill. Also, that day, I also went to Lowe's and got shelves for my office to put all the recycling and litter cleanup supplies and stuff, and I've been working on getting my office and all them supplies and stuff organized and fit up. On May 6th, we had our annual fundraising golf tournament for KSVB. We did okay. There was a, one of the members of the board had an incident. His house burned down, so he didn't get to do as much, and he's usually the one that gets everything together. So, we didn't raise as much money, but we did raise money and made a profit. So, we did raise some money. We're going to have another tournament in August in Bristol. I've also been working on getting things ready for the annual event for St. Charles Elementary School. They have a field day each year at the end of, end of the school where the kids get to make things and stuff. I do wind socks. I take plastic two-liter bottles and ribbon and stickers, and they get to make wind socks and take those home. That event will be June the 2nd. We were planning on working on Stone Creek this past month, me and some people from KSVB. They have two benches, two more benches that they're going to install at the park, but we did not get to do that due to the weather and the golf tournament and things like that. I've been working a lot on the complaints. That's a focus I've been at right now. In Ewing, there's two complaints, and I've taken pictures and sent out a second letter, but there's still no response. Also, there's old vehicles at that place, and I have the plates, but I've not been able to contact the people that own the cars because the people that own the cars is not the same people that own the property. So, I'm trying to contact someone in there to see what I can do to get that cleaned up. Dryden, there's one. The people have started cleaning up the property. They're not completely done. Their date's not passed, but they are working on it. In Jonesville, I have the code and the ordinance and the letters sent out, and in the process that we're going to get the property, and then we're going to clean the property and stuff up on Town Branch. We are going to get that done. It's almost, almost done and ready to go so we can get in there and get that cleaned up. In Keelke on the, some property up there, someone's been, actually in Keelke and in St. Charles, there's people that's been throwing their trash out on Virginia Penn property. I've actually got people's names out of that trash, and I'm in the process of violating those people that have been doing that. And I'll go in and clean up that, and then the people that get fined, they'll get 100 community service hours to clean up trash, but they won't clean that up. They'll clean up trash in other They'll clean up trash in other parks and stuff, cause if they go to clean their mess up, they usually don't do it, they just leave it or whatever. So they will have to do community service, but we'll get that part cleaned up. In Woodway, there's a house that I have taken pictures and stuff and I've sent out the first letter. The house is actually caved in and so I'm gonna work with the building inspector to get that taken down because the house you can't leave in cause it burnt and the roof, roof has collapsed and that. So I'm in the process of getting that one taken care of. Another property in St. Charles that's close to where they were dumping the stuff on Virginia Penn's property, the people. The church in St. Charles, the year that the snow caved in, they've just took the church down and they've just piled the stuff up along the side of the roads on their property. So I've sent out a letter, letter telling them they can't leave that stuff there, that it needs to be taken to the transfer stuff. There's stuff like ductwork from heat pumps, church pews, carpet, metal, just all the things out of the churches just laying on the side of the road. So I've sent them letters saying they can't leave it there, that they'll have to dispose of it properly at the transfer station. In Okanita, there's a house that I've sent out the letter and I've actually went by the house three times and there's still, I cannot find the owners or not there when I went by. Gonna go by there again this week. This house is in particular causing problems for other people because there's rats coming out of there and it's going into the other people's houses and chewing hoes and stuff. So I've focused on this and I've been by there and I am gonna try to get in contact with people of every which way I can to get this taken care of. Because it's not only affecting their own property, but it's affecting other people's property in the neighborhood and stuff. So I'm trying to get that one resolved as well. In Hagen, the property, they're starting to clean it up and I'm continuing to monitor that one to make sure they get that cleaned up. The agenda for May and June is to continue to work on these complaints and then to have the St. Charles School Event to get the benches installed and then start cleaning up the property on Town Branch. Does anybody have any question?
I do. Two houses that you spoke of down in Ewing, is that on Route seven forty-four?
Yes.
What about where you said they were dumping in Keelke on, where was that located exactly?
It's actually not in Keelke, it's in Sigma area. It's like after you cross the road tracks and you go around the curbs, it's on the right, there's been people back in there dumping trash in there.
As far as these homes, what kind of timeframe does people have to get complaints?
Usually once they contact me, I give them about thirty to forty-five days depending on how bad the situation is, severity of the matter is. Depending on if it's totally horrible and what all they have to remove to get out of there. Cause some people, they have to remove, you know, not just trash, but there's like building materials and appliances and stuff like that. So it depends on the severity, but no more than forty-five days. And then some I've only given fifteen days if, you know, I can't contact them. It depends on what timeframe, when I start and how long it takes them to contact me of how much longer I give them to get it cleaned up. If they don't do nothing, we take them to court and then we fine them.
Well, Josh, have you, have you talked to the, the homeowners there at those two houses I'm talking about, seven forty-four? Have you spoke to those people?
One of them I have and one of them I have not, but one of them I have spoke to.
There's two houses on Town Branch. One down next car wash, one on the other end at the over lane. Have you contacted, which one have you contacted?
The one I, is the one at the car wash is the one that we're going to go in and get right now. And then I'm also, I'm in the process of getting the other one, but it's not as far as that one because I've just not got to that one, cause I started on the other one before that. But I'm doing the same process for both of them, but I'm just ready to do this one here at this end of the Town Branch.
Are these the same two that the building inspector's already given notice on?
I'm pretty sure it is.
Those are working through and he's not received any comment, any response back from either the property owners on those. If we don't have a response within the next two, three weeks, then we'll be bringing those to you for the June meeting for possible further action. Yes.
I think it's basically abandoned, I think that's one of the problems with it.
You too? Anybody have any questions?
Continue, good work.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Gary Collinsworth.
Good evening Chairman and members of the board. To give you a little update on the Solid Waste Department and the projects that are above and beyond just garbage to the county. The garbage collected for the month of April was one thousand one hundred and sixty-eight point four seven tons and the tires that were collected were thirteen point nine three tons. The routine maintenance throughout the county is, a little bit on that is with getting shipment of dumpsters in last month, we've been exchanging dumpsters out at different sites. We were trying to get all the dumpsters that were damaged replaced before summer started. With weather, time off, breakdowns, other projects coming into play. It has left us with approximately nine dumpsters that are still in need of being replaced. Some of those problems right now with the dumpsters have been with the unfenced sites and how often they are getting burnt. Seems like we replaced a couple dumpsters and after the weekend, they've already been burnt. And so we're kinda, kinda just fighting it over and over with that issue. And once, once the dumpster do get burnt, seems like the lifespan and they, they begin to break down so much quicker. So we've been replacing, repairing all through the winter. We ended up rebuilding almost forty dumpsters this winter. About eight of those that we completely cut the bottoms out of and put complete new bottoms back in them. So we kinda gained a little bit of dumpsters on hand, but the ones that we prepared, we tend to fix them to go out to the unfenced sites, cause they're the ones that get burnt. So we try to, we try to fix and put a Band-Aid on them, I guess you could say, in some way, to put those to those sites. And make sure that our newer cans stay in the fenced in and, you know, the sites that are more well-maintained, so. And then in, in the past few years, we replaced a couple sections in the roof on the terminal building at the airport. And during the windstorms in the past few weeks, we've had some additional damage on the terminal building. Approximately seven shingles have been torn off and others have been loosened. Those repairs, they'll be scheduled, you know, in the near future. In the past month, we were able to get the stockpile of white goods and metal removed from the transfer station. It was arranged to be loading, hauled by the contractor, so it wasn't an additional cost to us. And the removal of the white goods was needed to make room for the approach on the new scales, on, on the entrance side of the scales. And as, as the white goods come in, we're gonna, we're gonna be taking those, taking it out kinda as we get it, to keep the stockpile down, low. That way, once we move to the new transfer station and relocate our metals, metal pile out, you know, out beyond the scales, we won't have to move it. We'll just, you know, we'll have it down and just be able to, you know, start storing it out there and not have to, you know, move a bunch of material out there. The, the mowing schedule at the sites throughout the county, it's been started, it's on a two-week schedule. At the airport, the entrance, the terminal building and a portion of the runway along the lights, we keep that on a two-week schedule. But the additional property at the airport, we, we do that sometimes two, maybe three times a year. But that's to go and take tractor and bush all, you know, all the remaining property within the fence. So, and that, I had it scheduled to start today, it was raining this morning. That's, that's put off till tomorrow, we'll start on that project tomorrow and start getting all that mowed and taken, taken care, taken care of. The work has been done from our office to prepare for the opening door. We've made some changes to the doors and women's bathrooms. We also installed some new plumbing in the women's bathroom for the showers. Those, those wasn't working last year, so we've kinda updated that a little bit. Some lighting fixtures were changed also. And we have a couple valves that been ordered for additional repairs in the men's bathroom. And once we get those repairs, you know, or once we get those parts in, we'll, we'll get those fixed. But a couple of those have been issues, I think, with more, more so with people kicking the valves to fuss, you know? And they, they broke the valves or broke the back of the urinals or toilets and stuff, so. Kinda looking at maybe trying to build something out of metal to kinda support that to where they can't kick and move it so much. Maybe to cut down on those kinda maintenance issues for the next, for the next year. And if, and if we get the time, we may try to put it in during the summer, but can't guarantee that with all the, the other projects and stuff coming up. So that's something I'd like to try to get in and get, get set up for at least the next year. A little bit on new construction. The scale house is still under construction. We've got the metal roof completed on the building. The doors and windows are also installed. We have the metal to begin installing on the sides of the building. We still have the interior work to do, including the bathroom, all the wiring and plumbing. There's work to be done to tie the scales and the scale house together. It consists of retaining wall and allowing for, to allow for proper drainage, you know, around the scale house. And also install a decking between the scale house and the scale building, or the scale house and the scales to allow access to and from the, from each, each. Each of the, the scale and scale house. A little bit on vehicles and equipment. We've had several breakdowns in the last month. Some of, well, as Larry knows here in Schlamp, the two thousand and ten Mack, it's continued to give some problems with coolant and fuel issues. In a month's time, we've had some issues twice with injector cups leaking coolant into the fuel. They've covered a second repair under warranty due to the time period. We've had issues with wiring harnesses. And a lot of that's mice chewing on the wires and stuff, just they, they attract to the garbage trucks just because of the smell and stuff. So they tend to chew on wires and anything else they can find. So it's created a few issues there. Seems like the truck, we get it fixed, it runs okay for three or four weeks, then another issue comes up. And I usually spend more on the two thousand truck, two thousand and ten truck than I spend on all the other trucks and equipment combined. We've had a, we've had the two thousand and six, which got replaced this year with the two thousand and sixteen truck. And it, it's starting to show a little bit of those issues with life, just because of the hours and stuff on the truck. And those have been, you know, little things, but down in the truck, but like, for instance, belts broke, fuses blown, drive shaft bust on PTO, just some smaller things, wiring issues. And at this time, I've got two trucks broke down and one of those is the two thousand and ten again. Waiting on parts for that to get back on the road. We've also had a few problems with the Isuzu that's used for recycling apartment. And those issues were fixed in the shop and resolved through just normal routine services. We still have one issue with the truck, but that'll be resolved just as soon as time allows us to get in and down it for a few days and fix a few items, but. Other than that, we've got a few of the upcoming projects going, which is finish the scale house, finish the approach from the scales to the tipping floor. And that can't be finished until the general contractor finishes up with the concrete pores and allows us to gain access to that point. Where once, once they finish up, we can, we can have the, the time and the area and, and not being interfered with that contractor to, to fix that, the grade going, you know, to some scales that they're different for. Which mowed the airport, which I'm gonna start that tomorrow. And we got a, we got another project that's come up, we gotta fix some drainage around the pool at Thomas Walker. We were down there last, this past week, during one of the heavy rains. And we had a lot of the water and stuff pounding up on the concrete and going over into the pool. And some of that was from some of the grading at the bottom for the, the playground was installed. We had a little bit of rise in some of the, the grade there, which allowed the drainage to not, you know, flow through. So it was backing up and going in the pool. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to work out something with maybe PSA where we can get some equipment and kinda regrade that and, and get a little bit better drainage away from the edge of the pool there. And then once, once the contractor relieves, gets relieved from the, the building over here at the transfer station, we'll try to get started on the building of the office and the break room. And, and trying to get all that ready for the, you know, to move into the new facility. And that's, that's all I have.
When do you expect to move into the new facility?
We hope to be in by July one, we hope probably have another progress meeting Thursday. Thursday and see how they're progressing, which Gary's there every day and sees what's going on. But it's reached a point now, basically just tying it up, getting all the loose ends tied up and getting everything pulled together. We had a, we had a possible change order pending, but we talked about it Monday and opted against it. We were looking at possibly changing the lighting inside, in the tipping floor area. They had, what is it, sixteen, six bulb fluorescent lights for the lighting. And we were looking at a, maybe something of a single bulb type, either sodium or something else. But we looked at what, three different options? And then the architect upgraded the wattage on one of those because, in order to meet the same lighting standards that the fluorescent would provide. But it was gonna be fifty, about fifty-six hundred dollars for the, for the one that we had ultimately opted to look at, to make that change. And when you look at the cost of bulbs, we were just looking at having to get up and, get up on it, probably a scissor lift and change out six bulbs per light. Over sixteen lights over the course of time, but you gotta change those single bulbs when they go out too. At least the six bulb, you let a couple of them or three of them go before you get up there and change them as long as the others. So we felt like it, it, we'd better off, cheaper in the long run to just stay with the fluorescent, so we, we turned them loose. I'm not anticipating any other change orders, as far as I know, that's the last thing that we had in the mail. That one's about, been about forty-five days in the mail, getting processed to, to get us some numbers, so. Hopefully they'll be able to wrap things up. It may not be ready July one, we may not be ready to move July one. Like I said, he's still gonna get scales done and get the interior offices and I think his, his plan, I'm putting words in your mouth, but we've had this conversation. He wants to be onsite in the offices before they actually start using the facility, because otherwise they're back down the hill, they're a pretty good distance and can't see what's going on up there, so. Hopefully we'll bring the two together, it probably wouldn't be any later than August before we'd be ready to take it.
And, and one of the biggest reasons why that I'd like to be, you know, up there in the offices and the break room and have someone there is because we're, we're bringing people into an open site right now. And they can just back up and dump however, wherever they want, basically. And we're going into a building that's gonna have doors and they're gonna have to be directed and learn that you're gonna have to back in and dump and make sure you get the bed down, tailgate down, whatever. To not, you know, tear up something or tear up their vehicles or whatever. And for, for a period of time during this learning curve, we're gonna need to be present to make sure that everybody understands this, this is the way we need to make it work. And that's a change and you're gonna have, you're gonna have to adapt to it. So, and, and with that, I think we need to make sure that we're there and available to oversee that before we start this new type of operation, cause it's gonna be new to everybody, so. And then a little bit on the bulb thing there, just the preventive maintenance thing, you know, I think that for the cost difference. you know, uh, I think that for the cost difference, I think we can, we can go in once a year, and we're probably better off just going ahead and, once we're up on the lift, just to change them all, uh, and even, or, or fifty percent of them, change them all, and then that way, you know, you're, you're kinda staying with it because it's nothing like getting up and changing something, and then three days later, oh, there's another just blow, you know? So, I mean, kinda get it on some kind of a maintenance schedule to kinda go ahead and change some of those fluorescent lights out, because.
Do you own price LEDs on that?
Well, that's one of the prices, the LEDs and the high pressure solution.
We looked at three different options, and LEDs was one of them, but with the upgrade to the fixtures, and then when you look at the cost of bulbs, uh, all these others that we were looking at, the cost of bulbs on those is a lot higher than the fluorescent tubes, so.
Does it all have that goes value, or is it going to anything outside even these businesses?
Yeah.
Well, even at where I work, some of the lights are replacements, LED, I mean, they're just for what you get for the money, and basically it's, I don't know how long they'll last, years and years, I mean, they're maintenance free, basically.
We looked at, you know, the, the installation costs and the upgrading equipment that's gonna have to be purchased on the front end as opposed to long-term maintenance on the others, and we felt like it's at best a wash, but we'll probably save money over the long term. Or at worst a wash, I'll put it that way.
I have no.
I, mine for you, Mike, but what, what about these unmanned sites, unfenced?
We'll give you our recommendation. I think I can speak for both of us. Get rid of them.
How many of them?
Three.
We got Hurricane Bridge, Hunter's Gap, Olinger, and six oh six, turnstile.
Four, overall.
And we.
He is, was supposed to have got back with us, we talked about it last week, and I told Gary, I haven't heard anything back from him. Uh, the last time we did that, he thought he was waiting on us, so I'm gonna send him an email and see, uh, if he's, if he's still considering it, or if he's forgotten it, or if the answer's no, or what. The other two sites, or the other sites, uh, Hunter's Gap, Hurricane Bridge, we don't have any alternatives for at this point in time. We, we've looked throughout the years, thought we had Hunter's Gap solved, uh, four years ago, but that one fell through.
Have you talked to anybody on that one, hurt?
We haven't talked to anybody. We just said if anybody knows of anything, we'd be happy to consider it, but uh, we don't have any concrete leads at this point in time.
What would happen if you closed them? They go to the next available, close the site?
They'd dump at that site for a while, as long as they could get by with it, if we couldn't catch them, but what, what's happened is some of the others, when we closed those, VDOT helped us on those, and uh, they've actually put berms up along the edge of the road, and it's kept traffic from being able to get off the highway and dump stuff out. Uh, a couple of those sites were a little, well, especially Hurricane, it's a little more remote, and they probably stop the road, just on the traffic, stop the road, you throw it out.
And that's always my concern, is wind up the river.
Yeah, but uh, and then the six oh six site, we, I don't know, many years been trying to work on that one.
You need to do what I told you, many, many years.
Yeah, I know it.
Go up there and build one, they'll never know it.
Their local, their local people would, and they would report it, we'd hear about it.
And then we can get something, we taking those up there and start scraping.
That site, we're trying to get, uh, some property from Old Dominion Power, and having to go through their office in Kentucky, and it's not a priority to them, it's a, you know.
You're talking about on this side of the substation area?
Yes. Yeah, the old, the field there that VDOT did when they built that segment up through there. We, I mean, they're agreeable to it, just getting, getting their properties division to move it on through and get it past the lawyers and get it done. We've been at that stage for three years.
What's the situation right there too, if you're out there forever there?
And I've talked to the local manager, I mean, he's all on board with us, but he can't get them to move either, so.
Yeah, I've tested everything I see.
And you're talking about the unfenced sites, so uh, a lot of the, a lot of the dumpsters and stuff that get burnt are ten, eleven, twelve o'clock at night, you know, and, and that wouldn't even be an issue if it was fenced in, uh, but then, you know, I get calls from different fire departments and stuff, it's like, you know, we're, we're spending time and money out here, you know, doing this.
They're tired of it.
Yeah, they're, they're all really aggravated with it, because, I mean, if, if a call comes in, they gotta go. And uh, I mean, that's just extra expense to them. Uh, and plus, it's, you know, we buy, um, sixteen dumpsters a year, you know, and it, you know, about fifteen thousand dollars a year, and, and if it weren't for the ones being burnt, the ones we kinda just wore out, and place in, you know, in place of the ones that's wore out, I mean, we could, we could stay ahead of it, but when they burn, I mean, they just, they start falling apart so much quicker, you know, and, and you just can't, you can't really stay ahead of it, and plus, uh, on weekends, I mean, it's all, it's all you can do on a ri, we, you know, after the weekend, just to be able to pick up the brush, the block, the, the building materials that's dumped at the, the open sites, I mean, they're, I mean, you could just about just make a whole day if you just went to the four places, but, I mean, we can't do that, and you know, we've got a route to run, and we'll get, you know, on this, on the eastern end, and then the next day, we, we go to the western end and try to start, and then, I mean, the rough stuff is just, I mean, it's, it's just continuous. But they, instead of bringing it to the transfer station and, and paying, you know, it's thirty-seven fifty a ton, and paying, if they, if they bring in four hundred pound, I don't know if they got the thoughts of, they gotta pay thirty-seven fifty for four hundred pounds of what, but they, they take it and dump it to the sites and stuff, and, I mean, that's where tax money's going, to get it right back up, so. I don't know what, I mean, I, I feel like I know what the solution would be, but it's, you know, it's kinda hard to do that.
So you will get in contact with the, the guy who's ready to.
I'll follow up with, with another contact with him, see if he's ever made a decision.
Okay. Can we post some kinda sign on there at approximately cost when these dumpsters are burnt, and if they continue to be burnt? I mean, you can't spend a fortune just for a little bit of convenience, is what I'm saying. And I don't, and I think that a lot of these kids that's burning this stuff, don't realize what it costs, fire to come out.
Like Gary.
Probably, and a lot of them don't, but maybe mommy and daddy can figure it out and solve some of it while I'm with it.
I put, uh, I put signs at Olinger.
I swear to you, we've got signs everywhere, they don't read them, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's fenced in sites, I don't pay attention to them, but I put signs at, at Olinger, and uh, this was, I don't, four or five years ago, and uh, they were gone before the next morning.
Now, you're not talking about local kids?
And, I mean, you can paint, you can paint on the front of the dumpsters and put stuff on it, and then to cover it up, they start talking about everybody on this, by spray painting something. I mean, it's, I mean, you can't, you can't really paint that on, on the dumpsters, because they'll, they'll just go in and do whatever the dumpsters, or burn them, so the paint goes away, or.
As far as the Olinger site, might, might, or we responded five times in the past month to that site. Don't mean them really.
How many times in the year does it get burned?
In a year's time, how many times do you say it gets burned? You guys are called out.
It'll vary each year. This year, we, we've seen an increase in that, and calls up there. Like I said, last month, we, we had five, five runs up there. Month before that, probably four, or, and it, it's all times, it's different dumpsters, and, and like you was talking about the repairing the metal, whenever the dumpster burns, you know, we, we go put the water into it, it hits that metal, and it just breaks down the metal, and it's, they're not, they're not gonna last.
I mean, they, they go quick after they're burnt.
Yeah.
Can you give some kinda approximate cost for the next time you come, on estimated cost of what them four sites run compared to fenced in sites?
Yeah, I'd do that.
But I think that's something maybe needs to be looked at. If it's costing more to keep five dumpsters out of a fence for a little bit of convenience that it's run, everything inside a fence, it.
Yeah.
Don't make a whole lot of sense, Lee, though.
And Hurrican Bridge, uh, I mean, Hurrican Bridge, I went over there, took a truck, and backed up against them and pushed them back out of the road, they'll pull them in the road, or they'll try to push them over the river. Uh, I don't know how many times we took change to them, tried to pull them back up over the bank at the river, but uh, I mean, they've been turned over, trashed down over the river. I mean, it's just, they'll take over.
Oh, I say, I don't see you have a choice of the fences is, or clover. We can't fence, the, the unfenced sites, we can't fence any.
No.
They're all beat out right away.
Yeah, that's, I mean, those are not an option there.
You can barely go through there, Hur.
Yeah, as far as fenced in site and driving, we've only responded one time to a dumpster fire there, that site.
Hmm, that's probably cigarette or something.
That's probably.
But, you know, the thing about it is, I, I hate, you know, we need dumpsters up in the Olinger area somewhere, because that, it's a long way to drive to get rid of your trash. I think you'd see a dramatic increase in trash beside the road over the bank or somewhere. But, you know, we need to really find, work to find in a place up there, or get in touch with that guy that, you know, that they're creating.
He's got the location. We looked, when we built the new driving site, we looked for property about halfway between Draden and Olinger, so that we could consolidate those two, but we never did find a site large enough that anybody was willing to work with or something.
That's, you know, still, it's.
It's a pretty good drive, but I mean, it's a pretty good drive for our trucks, too.
Yeah, I know, but it's, you can make it as convenient for the people as you can.
How much money are we offering him? Twelve thousand?
We agreed on a price.
What was it?
We're waiting on him, eleven, I think, but we're waiting on him to decide, he wants to say, of course, we were on the opposite side of the road. I don't know if he'll hold with that price or not on, on the other side. I think we're fairly in agreement on that, but his, the question is, is he gonna try to use that?
Should the right and left sides?
Be on the left side as you're going up the hollow.
Okay.
Yeah, and the area, there's a cornfield there, and there's an area that's kinda unusable for, you know, tenable ground, and that's the, that's kinda the area that we were hoping that he would say, oh yeah, well, can't use that, you know?
Yeah, we're trying to stay off of his best property, even though we're gonna have to go in and do a little bit of drainage work to, to drain it well and keep it stable.
But uh, talking about the, the Olinger site there, uh, the guy that works at the site now, uh, actually just talked to him today, and he had caught a contractor out of Wise County and uh, had dumped and filled the can, the dumpster there, over high flush angles. Uh, so if we could ever get Olinger in a site, uh, I think that area up there, uh, the garbage we pick up, we're picking it up six days a week, and it, it's full every day. And I think if we could get it fenced in, I think we could almost cut that in half by eliminating Wise County garbage.
I went by there Sunday morning, and that guy's doing a good job.
Yeah, he's keeping it clean, and there's not, but, I mean, as soon as he leaves, I mean, they're, they come and dump, you know?
They know what it's there for.
Yeah, well, I mean, I've even got him switched up to do different, different times and stuff, and uh, but still, I mean, he ain't gonna be there at one o'clock in the morning, and the next morning, it's, it's there. So they come, come through the night, you know, fenced in sites, you eliminate that issue, so, I don't know.
What cost do you reckon you can get with the fire, and even the sheriff if you had to? I'm saying estimated cost, I'm talking about what it's costing.
Fire departments, huh?
Everybody. Manpower, equipment, fuel, time, I mean, maybe we come up with different options.
You have any other questions? All right, Gary, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, we got our treasurer's report in their folder, I think everybody probably looked at it already. Next, public expression. Okay, we got two people here for public expression. You wanna go first, Keith? Okay, we'll let Josh go first.
Hi, John Flannery, I'm chief of the driving fire department, and I'm here on behalf of the community in Draden, and big members of my department. We're uh, looking, we're exploring the option of uh, starting a rescue squad along with our fire service, and we're just, I'm here tonight just to answer any questions you, you all might have about it, or anything, would like to get your Allah's blessing and approval for doing so, given the situation and how the rescue squad's running, operating, everything.
Well, how far along are you?
Uh, I, I started process with a person in Richmond about finding us a ambulance. Uh, we've, we've found a few for, you know, sixteen thousand dollars, something like that, and uh, that would be viable for us to purchase and, or possibly, like I said, that one guy can come up with one for free for us, like he helped Jasper out with theirs. Uh, he's, he's working on that, and hopefully that'll pan out for us.
Have you filed any paperwork or, or license or anything?
No, sir, I was gonna start that, uh, after I got your offspring. As far as EMTs and stuff like that, I, I currently staff three EMTs, one AOS provider, a, one, one person works in the emergency room as a nurse, and uh, two combat medics that was in the military, and uh, two other people who are in class, and one that just needs to uh, have a recertification.
And those are people working with the fire department?
Yes, sir.
Have you discussed any of this with emergency management without?
Yes, sir, I have.
As far as carving out a zone?
Yes.
A service zone, I mean?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
It'd be our, our regular protection area from the, the old Eden Memorial Church there, with uh, had to specially grow paint all the way to the Wise and Eden.
Just duplicate your fire?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I think you could, Keok, not Keok, you know, Olinger, all the way down that Olinger road.
Yeah, Olinger, all the way through K Springs and uh, to the top of the mountain there, there in Ludley.
Yeah.
Well, I don't, I think we've got a shortage of that, and I'm, I'm just grateful to the people that volunteered to do that type of work, it's.
Well, right now, the way, way we've been operating up there is, you know, we work real good with Pennington Rescue Squad, they came up, they come up and take care of our colleagues for us, as far as the medical part of it, and if we hear anything going like unresponsive, uh, anything that my people can help them with, uh, we, we always go out and do our very best to help them out, and they're, they're very much appreciative, and they're the ones that actually, uh, start talking to us about getting this established, get it up and going, and then they're, they're supporting us a hundred percent on it.
So, uh, have you formed the organization, or you, you can piggyback on the fire department?
Well, we're just gonna piggyback it on the fire department.
Okay, have you raised any funds yet, or are?
No, no, sir, we're, we're, we're just in the, in the beginning stages, all right.
Do you have any plans for a fundraiser, or what, what are your intentions as far as raising funds on a, uh, continuous basis to keep this thing going?
Uh, well, right now, they, a lot of that, uh, annual service do the insurance billing, this is a soft billing, it uh, it's, it's all included in your policy, it doesn't cost the policyholder no more money or anything, uh, say, uh, your, your medical insurance there, if you have a little problem or whatever, we come pick you up, whatever, uh, the insurance company takes care of that, because it's something that you've already paid for through your policy.
Okay, you said you located a truck?
We're hoping to.
Hoping to?
Yes.
How, what's the cost that do you locate there? How much you think it must cost you, you locate?
We're, we're looking right around sixteen thousand, just for, just for a basic starter truck.
And then that's just the truck?
Yes, sir.
And you don't have to have a, quite a bit of equipment on that truck?
Yes, sir.
Have any idea how much that thing would cost you?
Uh, somewhere in April, twenty thousand dollars.
So, you'd have thirty-five, forty thousand dollars.
Yes. We're looking to do fundraisers and uh, hopefully have a lot of support from, from people in the community. I've, I've spoke with a lot of people, and they're, they're willing to put into it and help us.
I guess that was what I was asking, you have, the fundraisers, you have an idea of the fundraisers you guys were thinking about doing?
Uh, we're just, just do our buck, normal buck drive like we do, and then uh, maybe sell chances on, on some prizes or whatever, and, you know, just our, our normal things that we do.
A little bit of illegal gambling on the side.
Yeah, just knock on the door twice and hit it the third time, just come on in.
Sounds good. Anybody else have any questions about it, or anything?
So why are you here for?
I just wanted to make sure it was all right for you guys, as we, we approached the.
Approached?
Approach the idea and move forward with.
Did we need to do anything to?
At some point, you have to adopt a resolution recognizing them. I'm not sure if you need to do it at this beginning stage, but when, before they can legally run, before they get, uh, when they get licensed and are, and they can run, they will have to have, uh, certification. Actually, before they get licensed, they'll have to have.
Well, I, I make a motion that we, uh, we give our support to you guys, uh, here at the beginning of it. And then, uh, if we have to do something in the future, we'll address that at that time.
I can have a resolution at the next meeting. It's similar to all the others. Everybody has to come in and get, and get that recognition resolution.
Like, like I said, I want to start here and talk to you guys first. And I've already got the, the packet, the paperwork packet to fill out. Uh, I'm gonna start on that, uh, this week and then as long as it's all right, you guys will move forward.
Everybody okay with it?
Yeah, I think it'd be great.
Okay, go at it.
All right, thank you.
Good luck.
All right, thank you.
Okay, is there?
We got one more, I think.
Wanna do it?
Oh, yeah.
Hey, Keith.
Pretty good. Uh, Keith Harless, Town Pennington, Town Manager. Uh, I'm not here to ask for nothing, so hopefully I've got some good news for you. Uh, I got me some cheat notes here, so you have to bear with me. Don't want to forget much. Uh, I appreciate you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm here on behalf of the Town Pennington and Town Council to express our gratitude to the board for helping us with the recent, uh, TP filming of the Fisher ATV show. And greatly appreciated from you all and your tourism board to really help out, um, making that possible for us. Uh, to get a little background on the, the show, we originally agreed upon, uh, one sh, one thirty-minute show with Pennington's Trail getting fifteen minutes airtime, Tazewell County Dirt Trail, Pocahontas getting fifteen minutes of a thirty-minute program. After the end of the day on the filming, the producer of the show come to me and expressed that they had enough footage and material on the surrounding areas of the trail and for Tazewell that they're gonna produce actually two shows. And they're gonna give Pennington's Trail a thirty-minute show by itself. And, uh, that's gonna be at no extra charge. So, the, uh, agreed upon prices, they was, they said they can pick up sponsors to cover the price on the other ones. They was very impressed with Lee County and this part of the state. They, they recognized the beauty that we have here in Lee County and up on the trail. You know, the, we got eight overlooks up there. Uh, Mr. Leonard and Mr. Schiff got to participate in, uh, filming. And Mr. Mosley stopped by to check on us when we was doing the, uh, ATV Drag Race. We had it displayed for them, so it could be in the TV program also. Uh, on another note, uh, it's gonna be, the show will be produced or aired on NBC Sports and on Discovery Channel Destination America. Uh, according to their website, they're new, they're filming episodes now and their new episodes should start running in July. Uh, it was reported to us when they come to us Spearhead Trail that, uh, they have close, including YouTube, they have a hundred and forty-three million viewers for that TV program. So, hopefully if we can just capture one percent of that, you know, that'd be a lot of extra, extra people coming to Lee County and, uh, you know, Pennington and everything. I think, uh, it was a well worth investment, in my opinion, for that, uh, for that type of advertisement to, uh, reach that many people for that price. So, lots again, I appreciate, thank y'all for being in there. Uh, another added note, Heart of Appalachia and Spearhead Trail, they brought in a reporter from Side by Side Magazine, uh, last Friday. Uh, she came in and stayed a couple of days and she toured the area and, uh, the Pennington, uh, Stone Mountain Trail. And, uh, she's very overcome, you know, she's from Pennsylvania and she's very overcome with, you know, our beauty and everything. And I'm not for sure when that, uh, is gonna be in the magazine, but she said she'd give us some copies and I'll bring some, so you all can have the, a copy of the article. So, uh, I got a lot of high hopes, uh, I think so, for Lee County. Hopefully we can capture some of this tourism with those two projects. So, uh, once again, I'd like to, I'm, I'm behalf of council here to thank y'all for really helping support now. Really appreciate that.
Thank you, Keith. Can we make that date, viewing date, uh, public in the newspaper?
Oh, yes, uh, I think, uh, Mr. Watson, I think he did a story on it and, uh, I don't, uh, for the local paper, but, uh, that it's up to the, uh, like the TV stations, they're the one that determines the airing time and, and things of that nature. Then, uh, the Fisher people said that they would notify us and then we can make it public then when the viewing's gonna be.
So, the, the television people let you guys know when it's gonna be, so that the rest of us can, uh, know?
Yeah, mm-hmm. And then it'll be on YouTube forever, so anybody can go to it and view it then. I think, uh, anything else?
How, how's the building come along?
The new welcome center?
Yes.
We're scheduled to be complete by the end of June. We're finishing rough in on the inside. Uh, O Virginia's doing an excellent job on the building. I think it looks very nice. And, uh, just, uh, trying to get that done with our, our in-town service, though. Seems slow, you know how these projects are, so.
But also for public's general information, how many camp sites do you have?
Right now, we have twenty-two, uh, camp sites available with full hookups, uh, and I think we're permitted for twenty-two more. And, uh, this past weekend, we had the, uh, the Comma Horse Association, uh, hosted a International Barrel Association competition. They had close to, uh, maybe two hundred spectator, or participants show up. And we was able to host, uh, ten of the campers, I think, that night. You know, people has the horse trailers with the living quarters in it, so. They're doing, uh, the horses are doing excellent job, too, so hopefully.
Uh, what's the cost, Keith?
Uh, twenty-five dollars a night for the thirty-amp service and thirty-five dollars a night for the fifty-amp service on the brand and the camp sites. And that's full hookups, water, sewer, electricity.
Well, how, thanks for that, that's. The, uh, how do you feel about the traffic? Are we doing okay on the traffic on the trails? Uh, is it what you expected, or?
I think it's a slow start.
A slow start?
And a lot of that's the weather, probably. And, uh, I think that we're gonna have a growing pain. I think the town council's recognized that, you know, you gotta get that information away from here and Spearhead Trail's doing an excellent job promoting it. And actually, uh, June, first week of June, they, we have a, uh, with the Heart of Appalachia in conjunction with, uh, Spearhead, we're going to, uh, ATV, uh, conference and, uh, convention in Louisville, Kentucky, which that in case, you know, that's our demographics that we're looking for outside Cincinnati and probably, I think, and we're gonna be set up in the booth and the Town Pennington's sending two representatives up to promote, you know, Lee County, uh, with some cards and, you know, just try to let them know we're here.
How many of you guys going? That's exciting. How many of you guys going?
I've only got two signed up right now. Me and one of, Councilman Warner's gonna go right now, so. So, I don't think it's as fun as what they think it's gonna be.
Do you have brochures printed up, Keith? Do you have brochures printed up?
See?
Do you have brochures printed up?
Do we have brochures printed? Yeah, I'm in process of getting, uh, they're ours. I just got the rack cards. And Ashley gave me some of the Lee County's rack cards, you know, those that are just handouts, so.
I need some rack cards in my office. As soon as I get them, people come and get them. Yeah, I can't keep them.
For the county?
Yeah, okay, county and. Of the trails.
Okay. Uh, uh, the town, we actually just finally had our rack cards. We had last night's council meeting, so I've got them on order.
Get something, Ashley, on Thursday. You have anything to do? You don't have one from the town, you?
No, we're not gonna get ours until May twenty-fourth, so that's what they notified me today about, so. I think this, I think that's the direction that we're going in, trying to get some outside money to come in and, you know, expand it, hopefully.
I know, that's, that's a trail and a half. Uh, like I said, Didi and I went up there, you know, and went up on there. We didn't go all the way to the top. We had to come back and, uh, that's a trail. Yeah, that is a trail.
The, uh, Fisher people, they had just finished filming in Costa Rica and they, uh, said our trail was very unique and to the nature of the difficulty levels. I mean, the Spearhead Trail, I think they're promoting our trail as, uh, too tough to tame, you know. A couple of our trails are black label trails and it's, uh, very difficult, but these people that have those machines, they, they'll run them right up it and they'll, they'll think nothing about.
What they're looking for.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I'd just like to say I appreciate the, uh, invite of the bear for us to come up and, and I want to thank Mr. Harless for his hard work, uh, not only for the Town Pennington get, for, for Lee County also. Appreciate you.
Appreciate it, no problem. We're all in it together, so I'm trying to look out for all of us, there includes me, too, so. I want to keep the job. Appreciate y'all.
Thank you, Keith. Thank you. Okay, I hope everybody's looked over the, uh, minutes of, uh, recent meetings, uh, if you have, and, uh, entertain a motion to approve. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Uh, uh.
Okay. All right, we have the payroll, uh, warrants and then the approval of the distributions. Do you hear a motion?
Motion to pay the bills.
All in favor?
Uh.
Okay, we have another delegation. Been waiting so patiently. Roger?
Yeah, I'm Roger Elkins. I'm here with the Daniel Bennett Soil and Water Conservation District Board and Mr. Bob Emerges is here with me. And, uh, we just want to express our appreciation for the opportunity to come and stand before the board and give everyone an update of, of what we think is our good work here in the county. Uh, I did pass out, just to, it's just a brief summary of some of the work that we've done in this fiscal year. And, uh, I'm gonna let Bob talk about some of the programs. We're gonna do that and we'll try to answer any questions that you might have. And, uh, so we just wanted to give you an update. So I'll turn it over to Bob.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. On the, uh, handout that Roger passed out to you, uh, it covers from, uh, July two thousand fifteen present. And under the Virginia, uh, Agricultural Cost Share Program, we have spent five hundred ninety-eight thousand, six hundred one dollars and twenty-nine cents on agricultural best management practices so far. There's also an additional two hundred ninety thousand, eight hundred ninety-nine dollars obligated for projects that are already under, under contract. Some of those will be finished by July of this year. And the North Fork Power River Watershed PL five sixty-six project, there's been a one hundred seventy-five thousand, two hundred seventy-seven dollar twelve cents spent on the completion of two, uh, acid mine drain, drainage sites. Since July two thousand thirteen, a total of nine hundred thirty-five thousand, seven hundred thirty-six dollars of grant funding was used for the completion of four AMD sites through the grant agreement with DCR. And also an additional four thousand seven hundred fifty-seven dollars and ninety cents was spent on realty services for some of these projects. I'll turn it back over to Roger.
And, uh, like I say, this, this is just a brief summary, uh, these programs, once we finish up the fiscal year, the end of June, hopefully we'll be able to come back and, and report in again, maybe in July or August. And we'll have a lot more detail on what these programs entail for you to take a look at. Couple of other things that we wanted to talk about is, uh, one would be the Virginia Rose and Sediment Control Program that, uh, we, uh, provide that service to the county to monitor this program on behalf of the county. And we appreciate the opportunity to, uh, to monitor that for you and, and we hope that, uh, we're doing the job that you want us to do with that. To let you know that since July, there's been four ENS permits reviewed and issued. We have nine ENS projects that are ongoing that we do inspections on and monitor. And we know of three ENS projects that are planning that will come up for review and approval, you know, sometime soon. So, that's kind of where we are on, on the erosion and sediment. And also a unique project that, uh, I don't know how many people know about it, but the Virginia Brownfield Restoration Economic Redevelopment Assistance Program is interested in purchasing some problem, uh, property down in the Cedars area and more particularly down where the Russell Sawmill and the, uh, the, uh, refinery, the oil transfer lot down there is located. And, uh, we have been working in conjunction with them. Their, their goal is to clean up some potentially polluted areas and return them. And that's the reason they're interested in that. Our role has been to coordinate, uh, some plans on what it would take to clean up that site, some, uh, realty services and those type of things, just working with that group. You know, they're providing the funding, we're just doing some coordination for some testing, plan development, realty services, that kind of thing. And they're working with the property owner and, and part of that affects their negotiation with the property owner, how much they're able to spend, what's gonna take to clean it up will affect their negotiation. So, that's just some of the things that we're doing. We think we're doing a good thing for the county and we, uh, appreciate the board's continued support of our programs and the opportunity to, to work on that ENS program. So, if anybody has any questions, we'll try to answer them.
Yeah, the, the sediment site down there is something that the tourism community is very interested in. And, uh, how are we coming along on that?
There has been two remediation plans, two levels of remediation plans that have been done by an outside firm. They have, uh, help me, Bob. Basically, they've taken soil samples, they've looked at the extent of some of the pollution, they've talked about some of the things that have to happen in that. Though that plan certainly has not been finalized, but it's just a rough drag of what it might take to do that. And that information has been provided to the Brownfields folks. And I guess they are assessing that in their, in that negotiation process with the property owner. Like I say, our, our role mostly has just been to coordinate getting that done. We don't really get into the nuts and bolts of what it takes or where that negotiation is.
Is, uh, the recreational education use, is that consistent with what the Brownfields Fund does on, especially where it's economic development?
Yeah, I, I am not that familiar with the Brownfields folks. I know that my understanding is that that association is similar to a super fund type thing. Their goal is to clean up some of these polluted areas. And they're working with the Cedars folks to add, that joins the Cedars area. I, I don't know what their ultimate, but I think, I think that that is part of their thing is, is tourism and, and having available.
That was why we was led to believe.
Right, and I, and I think that's true. And, and what I can tell you is that we can, uh, we can investigate that a little, little further and then when we return the next time, we can have some more details on that.
Yeah, if you would, definitely do, Roger.
Yeah, because I, I just, I don't know enough about that to talk to you about it.
I think it's been a couple of years since they first pitched this, the proposal. And at that time, they didn't, you know, know who, what their source of funds would be to actually try to make this happen. So, I'm just curious. Cause I don't know that much about the Brownfields Fund either. And I know they, a lot of it's geared to trying to re-convert that back to economic development use or, you know, have it revenue producing.
Right, and I think that's correct, but I can't, I can't.
You can be a little bit nosy and kind of.
Yeah, we could, we could certainly get some more detail and report back in on exactly what that is and what they intend to do. And a more detailed report of where we are and where they think they are.
Appreciate it.
And, uh, we think the ENS program is, is moving smoothly.
Smooth as stormwater.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure how, what's gonna happen with that, but we think that that ENS program is gonna do nothing but grow here in the county. So, we anticipate more work along that line. And we just appreciate the opportunity to do that.
So, Roger, you come back and you have, like I'm hearing, you got four AMD projects listed. Are you actually gonna have what the projects are? Are you actually gonna have what the projects are when you come back? Since you're saying this is a brief overview.
Typically, what we would do, and a more thing, we would tell you that we did, and I'm making up numbers, we did 20 projects. They averaged this much in cost. They included so many lines of water line, so much fencing, so much stream exclusion, some details of what we did. How many projects, what the average cost, those types of details. What kind of things would you like to hear?
Well, I just wondered if you, you know, it's just kind of vague on four projects, you know, if you just had.
On the ENS?
Yeah, you know, what's actually taking place. Yeah, the AMD projects through the DCR.
These, the same thing, we can give you, of course, each site has a name. We can provide you with some pictures that we have that documents the work. I can get you quite a bit of detail on that if you want that. This depends.
No, it don't have to be like down to the, all the cross letter stuff, I just make a brief synopsis of what kind of fire, where it's at.
We can do that.
Just, you know.
I'm sure I remember, Bob.
And I mean, if you probably just give them a general idea of where it's located. The names, you can use the names, but if they told you slick lizard, you're not gonna know where that's at. I do.
The majority of here's in the Stone Creek, St. Charles area. Here's what I can tell you. One you'd be very familiar with, and that's the Ran Olsford Coal Tipple Site at the intersection of 421 and 606, where that Tipple Site was cleaned up and the outdoor thing, the tree planting, and that is one of these sites. There's another site on Healy's Creek on 754. There's one up in St. Charles, up in the Monarch area, I think.
There is one right, I believe it's right there in Taylor.
Yeah. This is your going toward Monarch?
Yes.
On the rack.
But we can, I can get you some more detail on that in an overview and saying, in this area, we kind of did this, in this area, we kind of did. I can do that. We can do that. Anything else? Again, we appreciate the opportunity to come forward, board and update on what we're doing. Thank you all for the hard work that you do. And the other part that I wanted to say, your departmental folks that came up here and gave reports, very good. When you talk to those folks, they'll know that I appreciate their hard work because I thought that they gave good reports and I was impressed. So let those people know that we appreciate them.
Appreciate you all.
All right.
Thank you, Bob.
Appreciate you.
Okay, monthly appropriations, schools.
I make a motion to approve monthly appropriation, 16-005.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Okay, supplemental appropriations. We have several here. We wanted to pass them all at one time. We're in the dish. Okay, I make a motion that we approve all of the supplemental appropriations together as a group.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
All right, we're down to new business. New transfer station pay request, 12, number 12.
Send a amount of $43,902.74. I mean, that's just for work completed within the last 30 days, basically. And I put in there that we hope to be complete within the next 60 days. But the architect has approved, has reviewed and approved this for payment and I concur with that.
Okay, do you hear a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Right, resolution and related documents for taxable bond issue.
As I've indicated before, the bond issue is broken up into two different pieces. One, the taxable portion, which is work that was completed more than 60 days prior to when we adopted the first resolution back in February, I guess, for this project, or for the financing for the project. And then the non-taxable portion, which covers everything after that date, plus the refinancing for the social services building over here, which will save us about a quarter of a million dollars over the term of the bond. Sort of giving background on both of them. And the documents are very much similar in both of these, in both B and C, for the taxable and the non-taxable. It's just that they have to be dealt with separately. On the taxable portion, this will be about $409,000 if it's drawn down under the taxable portion. And the way it's set up in the payments, this pays out faster than the non-taxable portion does. So, because it comes with a higher interest rate, so it's logical to do that. There is a resolution included in there for the board supervisors to approve. This proves authorizing the issuance and sale of the taxable bond and the execution of all the documents necessary in connection with this. That'll include signing off on loan agreements, the prime lease of property to the IDA and also the leaseback of that property for the county to actually use the property and pay them lease payments, which is equal to the bond debt payments. So it all becomes an even wash. The IDA makes nothing off of the whole process. They just act as the conduit in order for us to complete this transaction. So the first request is the adoption of that resolution regarding the taxable portion of the bond issue. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer that.
So basically, you're putting it over in the IDA's name? So the county's name, is that correct?
Well, yes, the bond is issued in their name. In order for the county to issue a bond, there has to actually be a public voter referendum. So it makes it a streamlined process to go through an IDA who does not have that same requirement. They can issue bonds without having to go through that process. So it makes it an easier process. The bonds are issued in their name, they transfer the funds to the county and the county then uses those funds to pay for the construction costs of these projects. The lease, the prime lease and the leaseback agreement are just the instruments to provide collateral to the bond issuer, which in this case is Palma National Bank. So we lease that property to the IDA through a master lease or a prime lease. They in turn lease the property back to the county in exchange for rental payments or lease payments, which is used, actually, the lease payments never go to the IDA. They go directly to the bank, in this case, whoever holds the bonds. So.
The county would still maintain control of the property, correct?
Yes, yes. The county's in full control of the properties through the leaseback of property.
We could always revote on anything, but we'll still maintain control of the property.
Okay, so we need to pass both resolutions?
Yes, there are two resolutions that need to be, though we're doing separately.
Oh, separately.
One for the taxable portion of the bond, one for the non-taxable portion.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the resolution concerning the taxable bond issue. Is that good? I'll say. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Then under C, there's a second resolution for the non-taxable portion.
Do you hear a motion?
And I will update you. I asked you at the recess meeting about bumping the loan up of $100,000. Because, in my understanding, with the staff of the finance company or the DML Laco Financing Group, that we could do that, but because they had already locked everything down, it was gonna create a little bit of an issue having to go back to the bank seeking the additional funds. I told them just forget it, lock everything down, leave it. We're covering the basic construction costs of both projects. The only thing that won't be covered under that, that will be paid for under local funds, is the build out on the transfers, on the scale house, scales, few incidental items like that. Nothing related to the main construction costs.
So how much is that?
Uh, well, it's about $100,000.
About $100,000, okay.
So this will still just be for the 1.3 billion for new construction, plus the payoff on the old bonds for the social services building that we're refinancing.
All right, okay. One carried about. I make a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Okay, Dean?
Hi, Dean. We've been notified of award of the burn justice assistance grant. This is an annual thing that we receive pretty much every year. The dollar amount changes a little bit. The sheriff's office has submitted a request that the funds be used. It does require a small local match, 10% local match. We get federal dollars of $1,993. Requires a local cash match of $221. And there are seven major categories that you can use this in. And typically, the sheriff's office uses this under the prevention and education program to provide materials, basically for elementary school children to try to encourage them, you know, to avoid crime issues and not become involved in that. So they are, again, this year requesting the matching funds for that grant to be used again for the prevention and education.
I make that motion that we approve that cash match of $221.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Oh, she carries.
Sheriff, do have a couple of other items that have come about since we closed out the packet. One, we have a pay request, number four. I don't have a copy of that if you can mention. For the extension office building, we had a punch list inspection last Wednesday. So I didn't get this until Thursday, the pay request till Thursday, so it was too late to get the packet. But did have the punch list inspection, everything, I mean, the building is basically complete. There's a few odds and ends, some signage and a few little items that were yet to be completed. Very incidental amounts of work and the contractor is working on that. There were a few other issues. Building inspector, anytime you do an addition to an existing building, you trigger some things as far as the existing building that has to be brought up to code. There were some things we did not work on and so we didn't have to do that. But in some other areas, there are just some general items of things that he's found. And so he's, the contractor, I mean, the architect, his punch list, I haven't actually seen it, but as far as the items that we saw that day, it's just a handful of items that need to be finished up before everything is fully complete. Building inspector had a few items and I think several of those have been taken care of when we had the punch list meeting there Wednesday because I know of several of them. He'd been copying me on those. And a lot of those were ADA compliance issues more than anything. So he's following that, being very thorough on some things like that. So pay request is for work completed to date. Is this still holding the retainage that's allowed? So we do still have some funds that will yet be paid to the contractor. This request is $31,016.25. The architect has reviewed it and recommends approval of this. We are still holding retainage of just a little over $20,000 on this project. So I would recommend payment on the pay request number four.
Okay, so how much extra do these things cost today?
What things?
The things that had to be added.
Oh, you're probably not talking $1,000 total on all of those. Yeah, it's very, very minor issues. Nameplates to put on each of the rooms or beside of each of the rooms to identify what that room is, whether it's an office or conference room, things of that nature. Just some bumper stops for the doors, very small items.
So would the motion to approve payment?
Yes, please.
Okay, do you hear a motion to approve the payment? For the project?
Make a motion to pay the bill for this number four on the extension office.
Hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
They are, they're dealing with vacation schedules and trying to move. And I think mid-June, they're gonna be without some folks. So it's either move before that or move after that. And right now, they're hoping to move first part of June. I'm not sure that everything can be ready because I really don't want them to move in until the contractor's 100% complete. Technically, you can move into the property upon substantial completion, but I don't recommend it because if you get in there and create damage, cause damage or something, you can't hold the contractor for that. I mean, and sometimes you sort of get in each other's way. And then we've got the issues of phones being transferred, getting new lines and some things. They wanted to transfer their existing lines in order to keep the same number, but because you're moving from the Jonesville Exchange to the Pennington Exchange, there was gonna be an additional cost for that that would hit us every month. So I told them they just, we need to order the new lines. Because of the Verizon strike that's ongoing, they may be a little slow in being able to do that. So I've agreed to pay that additional cost for the transfer in the interim if it's necessary that we have to do that. But it may be first of July before they can actually move it down.
Get wireless phones put down there with their same number. When they move up there, they keep it. Because I've got one, I can take it to Florida and use it.
That's, well, the building's wired. I don't know if, that may be a possibility for them. I don't know. Whether it'll work with the phone system they've got, I don't know because they're taking their phone system with them.
Well, I'd say.
Because it's a fairly new phone system. We just bought the phone system within the last three years, probably.
It's probably looking to be compatible with that.
But they will, once they're ready to open, they are, you know, they hope and will work with him on that, coordinating an open house and have some type of event. I told them since their cooperative extension will expect food, so anyway. But we'll keep you updated on when that will take place, when they get all that scheduled. Also, you just conducted a public hearing on the secondary six-year plan. If you are in agreement with that, and I stepped out there before you completed that, but if you are in agreement on that, this resolution would approve the six-year plan as it was presented tonight and the construction budget for the upcoming fiscal year.
Okay, Mr. Smith wanted to.
Pass one more, Bill.
To assign the money to.
Well, now, the rule addition program is not part of the six-year plan.
Okay.
That is not connected with the six-year plan as it goes. In the six-year plan, they identify funds that are available for the rule addition program because that's part of, part of the ongoing funding process because it is, as he said, 5% of the total construction budget funds. But it is not, rule additions are not on the six-year plan. The only thing that's on the six-year plan are roads that are already in the secondary system that are unpaid that are going to be paid through that, through the secondary six-year program. But rule additions is a separate issue. You can take that up as a separate item.
So this is basically, we agree with what Alan presented, the plan that they presented.
Yes, this is, if you are in agreement with the projects that were listed here. And I tell you, this is, Mr. Christian, I saw him at a meeting the other day. And, you know, I was tickled to death when he told me, you know, he said, you know, we're looking at a lot of those on rural rustic and he said, we're gonna be able to add some projects back. And when I actually got this, I surprised him. He projects they were able to bring forward onto the six-year plan because like I said, it's been a project every four or five years here lately. I mean, that's, that's the only thing that's been able to move forward. It's been that slow. So it's great to have five projects moving off of that old inventory list. And there's probably still, I meant to bring that up here with me and I forgot it, but there's probably still six, six more projects on that inventory list that are still. but there's probably still six, six more projects on that inventory list that we're still yet to deal with, so.
Okay, make the motion. We tie this resolution, secondary six-year plan, road plan 16-12.
Second.
All in favor?
And then, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion, as Alan said tonight, Mr. Sumter said about moving forward with this golf course road. And he said that would take a vote from the board here. Of course, Mr. Poe said that also. So I would like to ask to vote on that, if we get that tonight, to move forward with the golf course road.
Can you hear a second to that? A second. Wait just a second. A little discussion here.
Okay.
There's, I've been sitting on this board for eight years waiting on funds where we've not had any monies to do projects with. And I just feel that here, we're talking about golf course road. I think if you build a golf course, you need to build a road to it. That's just my opinion, you know, and I will not vote for it. I think, you know, this board needs to sit down and discuss what projects are already on, on the, been on the list forever. And I just don't think it's fair to walk in, take the money, and I'm going to put it here because that could have been done before, but it wasn't. That's all I've got. Mr. Flynn?
Anybody else?
Do they have a estimate on that road?
What'd he say tonight, a hundred?
Hundred and seventy.
Hundred and seventy thousand. Mr. Cobb, when I went out with he down there, of course, they've got the standards they've got to go with. But Mr. Cobb said that, to him, to fix that two tenths of the road was $100,000. But Mr. Sumter said tonight that according to their standard, what, how they looked at everything, it was 170, 170,000 dollars.
There were, I had to be down that way for something else yesterday. I drove in, I was in Washington, something down there, looked at that. I think the biggest issue is going to be the bedrock. That limestone running right under it. I mean, it crops out in there. And with the hills that are in there, they're going to have some drainage issues on dealing with that water. So that's, you know, that may be, building the road may be $100,000, but I think dealing with the drainage may be going to cost them a little bit of money too. So I don't know. But I, I think that rock underlying is going to be the biggest problem for them. You know, if they could build the road, build up off of that, that would, that would simplify it. But when they do that, that's going to create more runoff on the property. So I don't, I don't know what their, they're the road builders.
What funds that come out of this?
It's rule additions.
How much money we got in that?
We've got, he said tonight, about $80,000 in that fund, and...
That's why I thought, I didn't think we had much. I mean, I've sat here for eight, going on nine years.
Based on...
Well, he said this could be a three or four-year project down the road, but he said you've got to get started somewhere if you're going, you know, put it down there.
Basically, on, on the funding scenario that they presented tonight, there'll be about, probably about $23,000 or $24,000 a year flow into that if the construction budget stays roughly that amount. If it goes up, that number increases a little. If the construction budget goes down, it goes down, so.
But if you commit all that money to one road, nobody else, about four other board members in four years are not going to get anything?
Dane, you did a summary there of the different projects. Where does that one stand as far as the time that it was put on versus some of the others?
Well, they came up here last month and, and asked about it. So that's when we got them the application, so it's just been completed.
I mean, these, all these projects that you have here, do you have any idea where that, that one stands as far as...
Well, I've got the dates beside of the others, when they were submitted. Some of them date back, well, we, we haven't taken applications in several years, not formally. It used to be every year you would run an advertisement requesting people to submit applications, and then you follow through on those. And not all of them are eligible now. I, I had some applications that had received that I know the projects, they can't be built. One is Wagner Town Road in St. Charles. There's, it was looked at as a possible rule addition. Between the railroad and the houses, there's nowhere to get 40-foot of right-of-way. There's nowhere to get 30-foot of right-of-way. And, and so they, I mean, you literally can't construct a project under the guidelines you have to build. There's another one up here off of Finn Castle, Finn Castle subdivision. It's a new section over there, New Haven Road. That road's not eligible because, and, and I explained that to one of the property owners when they first filed it, but there's a deed covenant in, or not a covenant, well, it is. It goes with the property. That was built under our subdivision ordinance as it was updated. And if a, if a developer chooses not to improve the roads when they build that subdivision, they have to put a deed notation in the deed that that road is not eligible for improvement with state funds and will not be eligible for state funds for improvement. And when that application first came in, I thought maybe, I thought maybe the developer had missed that. So I pulled the deed in the clerk's office, and not only was it in the deed, it was in all caps. I mean, it was clear if they read their deed. It, it says, and, you know. So that one I didn't include in the list. There were probably three, maybe three others or four others that I had an application for, but the, they either did not identify the road at all where it was at or the information was so sketchy, I couldn't determine where it was. And I was having to rely on memory on some of them, going back as far as, as they did. But I just, I simply couldn't figure out where the location was. So, and, you know, I don't know the status of all those roads. Some of the property owners may have changed. They may not be willing to give right-of-way. They may. I have no idea. And I certainly don't have any cost figures on them. The last time, the last time a cost was done on about four or five projects, I think, and that was five or six years ago. And I'm sure those numbers are not good today, so I didn't include that information.
Well, that's one thing Alan was talking about. I mean, whatever happened when these was put in, he said that they had to have the permission, had to have the paperwork signed off of, had to know the cost. And we have no idea on that.
Well, before you move a project forward, I mean, when we took applications, you, you take just what I've got.
Yeah, I understand, but some of these, I mean, you're talking...
Well, these, some of these roads done been done. I know these roads. Like that shotgun road during Rose Hill.
Okay, now, that one, I wasn't exactly sure on. There was a couple that I know that had been improved that I didn't include in the list. But if that was done, but I think most of those others, I don't think any of those others have been put into the safety system. I started not to include that one. At the last minute, I put it on the list, but I wasn't certain on it.
How many people lives on that road now?
What road?
The road that we're talking about, the golf course.
Golf course road. There's, there's 15 homes down through there, and there's more people actually you, and of course, I knew what he said, but they have to use it to exit to go over to their house. I mean, you know, like, you go down through there, you'll take a right, for instance. You know, your driveway near your house is back here. There's 15 homes on that road, what's that?
Along with the business.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion to move forward with that golf course road. If I could get a vote on that?
Well, I haven't heard a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a, a first and a second. Okay, all in favor? We have, anybody against, anybody against this?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I'll, I'll notify the, and, I mean, you know, like I say, you, I don't know how soon they'll want to start moving with the paperwork because it'll be, based on the funding scenario, it'll be three, three years of moving progress before they're going to get into it. So I don't know if they'll want to start trying to tie it up. They may want to go ahead and start working on the right-of-way. They used to have an employee that, that was one of the things that he did. When you did rule additions, of course, back then, we were accustomed to doing four or five a year. They were short ones. We'd do like a tenth of a mile in each district. But he got out, he got all the right-of-ways, secured all that, worked out all the drainage easements and everything. The last year we done, we had to do all the legwork. So that, we'll, we'll have to wait and see what's required. Of course, they'll have to do some preliminary surveying and stuff to see if they're going to need any additional right-of-way. If there's no extra right-of-way needed, that'll simplify it a lot. The only thing I'm thinking they will have to have are drainage easements because they have to have those on almost every project. So we'll just have to look at those. And that may be further down the road once they get into doing a little bit of design.
Well, it's twice that whole community's coming up here.
Yeah.
I, I don't think that you're going to have issue with any...
Well, you hope not.
Well, if it does, then...
Well, that kills the project if they run into something that can't get it.
That kills the project.
Hi, let me say something. Mr. Secretary, my vote was yes. My vote was yes.
The other item, Mr. Chairman, under new business, I was notified yesterday by phone. Tina Rowe has resigned from the Southwest Regional Recreation Authority, so we have an open slot on there. As a representative for the county to the Recreation Authority.
Okay, we have two other.
Yeah.
To open something.
Oh, no. Now, we don't have any other organs this month. Those are next month.
All right, good. And what is her position that she's...
It's the Southwest Regional Recreation Authority, which is the, I guess you'd say, the parent of Spirithead Trails.
Okay, is that something that Keith must be able to serve in? Is there a conflict there?
Is he, is he good? Is he already on it?
No.
No.
He probably good to make the recommendation. Yeah, make a motion. We table it till next month.
Yeah, he probably good to make a recommendation because he probably knows who's done what with us.
If he's not on part of, he needs to be. Okay.
Got motion on the floor to table.
I'll second. All in favor?
That's all in the new business.
Okay, Stacy? Dane, you have anything else?
The school facility fund that we talked about developing, I suggested that that be done by ordinance, and I do not have an ordinance ready tonight because I can't find, I can't find authorizing code that says we have, we can do that. I'm going, I'm going to talk to the county attorney a little bit. And if we can't come up with statutory authority for that, we can still develop a policy to create that. And as long as, as long as the funds remain on this side, until there's a request to actually spin them or something, then you can, you still have final say in whether you appropriate those funds and for what they're appropriate for. So I, I just thought an ordinance would, would be a little bit more set in stone and a little bit harder to get around in the event something happened. But at this point, I, I think it may just be that it's a policy to set that fund up. But we'll iron that out. If it can be done by ordinance, we'll have it ready at next month's meeting. But if not, we'll just submit it as a policy.
I've got a question for you. How can I undo that motion I just made to table that till next month?
Anybody who voted in the majority can make a motion to bring it back to the table.
I'll make that motion.
I'm trying to think the technical term you use, but that's what it means.
I'll second it also.
I'll second the motion if you want to take that.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Now, I'll make a motion that we appoint Dee Dee Leonard to the Southwest Regional Recreation Authority.
Oh, I'll second. She second? All in favor?
It's more than a round four, I figured.
The next, the only other thing I have is budget. Print, there's not a lot of changes here, but when it had printed, you knew it. So you'd have clean paper to work with.
I'll have to condense first.
There's just a handful of changes in this. One of the things I did was plug in full numbers from the school board. Instead of just a plug of the local effort, this has got to be full-blown. And you'll see that your budget jumped about 20 million or, well, about $35 million when we did that. I do have information for you from the school board, and I was a little bit, I didn't know what to say. I got a phone call last Thursday from the sixth attendant, and he said that they, he had been exploring some other things and looking at cafeteria funds and the way all that's done and everything, and that if we wanted to fund them at minimum, that was fine. They could make it. I advised that, you know, as I'd already told him, we'd already had motions to approve them at 4.7 million, but that extra 158,000, he said, "If you want to give it to us, we'll take it. We'll buy new buses with it. If not," he said, "we'll be fine." And of course, I said, you know, "We'll, we can look at that. I don't know what the board will want to do, whether they want to go ahead and give you the full 4.7 million." Or I said, "One possible use of that extra 158,000 would be to jumpstart that facilities fund, or we could use it to lower our deficit." So the numbers you see in this printout includes the 4.7 million because that's the approved number that I have at this point in time. With that, also included in this is I included an average 2% raise for all county employees. It's an equal dollar amount, $624. It works out to 30 cents an hour. The 30 cents an hour was applied to all part-time employees. Our part-time employees generally either work 20 or 25 hours a week. So those changes were made into this. There is, there was one position that I did not make that or affect that increase to, and that is in the circuit court, not circuit court clerk, but circuit court. The circuit court judge has had, for several years, they have a part-time employee who's paid for 10 hours a week of work, basically as a case manager for the circuit court judge. The, that position has always been an employee in the clerk's office. And they have typically worked more than 10 hours a week to keep the workload up. And I talked to the judge about this today. I've been trying to see her for the last couple of weeks, but I hadn't been able to catch up with her, but I did have an opportunity to talk to her today. In the budget proposal you'll see in here, they made a request on that salary to take it to a full-time position. And both the other counties in, in this judicial district have secretaries for the judges. Scott County has one. I think Wise County has two. I see the county attorney agree that that is correct. When I saw the salary, it sort of blew me away on, on the dollar amount on that. But I talked to her today and, and also to the clerk. And they both indicated to get the caliber of person that they need with a legal background to be able to do all the case orders and things of that nature that have to be done to keep the court moving and to make sure the documents are correct and be able to work even when the judge is not here and keep all this work moving. That's probably not a bad number. Although in, in both of the other two counties, I think the current employees make less than that. They do make in excess of 40, but not 45. They do make in excess of 40, but not 45. What I, uh, talked to the judge about today was that if the board is in agreement to leave this and allow this to be a full-time position and for her to hire someone, uh, or in conjunction with the board, if you all want to hire or work with her or whatever, uh, if we left it at the 45 to make sure we were covered, would she do her best to hire someone at a lower salary? And she agreed that she would do that. So, uh, just want to make you aware that that one position is the only thing. Normally, uh, they've asked for a full-time employee for the past probably three or four years and that's one that I've stripped out on the front end and we're heading to away with. But I, I understand where they're coming from. The argument's been made to me since I started. Judge Yugi, when he was the sitting home judge, made the argument, pointing his secretary. Um, and as I explained to Judge McIlroy today though, his biggest argument was, well, both the other counties have them. He didn't get into the workload or anything like that because it, it was being handled. Uh, but the, the workload has been increasing year after year after year and it's getting more difficult for the clerk's office to be able to give up the extra hours that it takes far over and above the 10 hours a week to, to really keep the work up. And actually in some cases, the judge is actually sitting there typing her own orders. Uh, and she says, when I do that, I have to put cases aside that I need to be researching in order to do the secretarial work that needs to be done. So that's one area that, uh, I, I did not change regarding salaries. Now, uh, with these numbers, uh, and that's with the extra 157, roughly 158,000 for the school board included. Uh, and with the two percent raise, uh, we're sitting at about $756,000 deficit. Uh, if you apply that 158,000, uh, from the school board to that, that gets us down to just under $600,000 in deficit. You also asked that I look at, uh, possible other scenarios on health insurance funding. And I put together three different alternates to what we've got. Now, I prepared, prepared in table form so that you can see what our current percentages of participation are and what the proposed would be. And I'll explain those when I get these handed out. Uh, third top you'll see, that's, that's, at the very top, that shows you what we currently pay. Our current system, we pay 80% of a single plan. Then we pay 40% on the dual and family of everything above that single plan payment. It works out to effective rates, uh, of course, 80% for single. On dual, the county pays 65.94% of the premium and for family, it's 57.77. And you can see there the corresponding employer and employee cost, this is per month. I looked at three alternates. The first alternate there would have the county paying 85% of a single plan and 60% of the dual and family above the single payment. Uh, at that rate, the dual, uh, 78.37% of that would be paid by the county and the family, 72.59. The second alternate increases the single play, single plan payment to 90% and, uh, stays at 60% for the dual and family. And there you can see the, it still brings the dual and family participation up, uh, on the county's side uh, because you're paying more for the single plan. But, uh, the dual would be 79.45 and family, 73.33. Alternate three, the county would pay 80% of all plans. Now, in that situation, uh, those carrying single coverage get nothing extra. Uh, only the, the dual and family carriers are the ones that get that. And if you're, uh, look at who carries what, right now we have 53 employees who carry a single plan coverage, 18 with dual plans, 10 with family. All those, uh, in the single plan, 21 of those are county employees, 29 are constitutional officers or employees of constitutional officers and three are in grant-funded positions. Uh, the 18 dual plans, seven are county and 11 are constitutional officer. And the family plans, one is county, nine are constitutional officer. The increase over the current cost of county to adopt one of these plans. Currently, the county pays $590,150.40 annually toward health insurance coverage for employees. Under alternate one, that would increase to 669 and change. It would be an increase over the current amount in the budget of $79,653. Under alternate two, which is the highest pay, that's 90% of single. Uh, it increases to 693 or an increase annually of 103,000. And then, uh, the third alternate, which is just bumping the dual and family up to the same participation level as single at 80%, would be an annual increase of $78,864. Uh, there's a memo attached to the back of that and that's just to show, we, we looked at this, uh, three years ago. I didn't update this information. Uh, it takes a while to get some of these other counties, they're going through the same thing we are with budgets and everything. It takes them a little while to respond sometimes. But I just, uh, gave you an idea there of what, uh, some surrounding counties were doing three years ago. I doubt that those have changed. Uh, social services actually changed that year. Uh, Scott County, I think, is probably still at theirs, Wise County probably still at theirs. Not sure about the state, uh, what their participation rates are and I'm not sure if the school board changed theirs. But I just give you a little bit of a comparison as to what, uh, our surrounding counties are doing. Now, that's food for thought for you to look at, uh, if, if you are interested in making a change along those lines. Other than that, I did make, uh, one other reduction in budget. That was in the commissioner's office. Uh, I still had $15,000 in there for the tax map digitization project for next year. But, uh, talked with, uh, the commissioner today, he talked to, uh, Cumberland Partners. Uh, they think they're going to have that project completed by mid-June. Chris talked to him a few months ago and he told him he's pretty close and we thought that meant, we thought he'd actually have it done by now. But he said he hoped to have it all done by mid-June. So if that's the case, we'll have that project completed and paid for. There won't be any need for additional funds next year for that. Because we've got maintenance funds built into his budget for that. So, uh, I did reduce $15,000 out of the budget there on that, so. I'm hoping for suggestions or comments or anything else as to where you want to proceed from this point.
What did you, we do with, uh, tourism, same as last year?
Um, so which? Local tourism?
Yeah, local tourism.
It's, it's pretty much, the department is fully funded, uh, and we're providing the $2,500, uh, to the committee.
And the advertising?
We had, we have $10,000 in the advertising budget.
All right.
Uh, along tourism lines, um, the Spearhead Trails, since that has been mentioned, they asked for an increase, a considerable increase this year. Give me just a second to find the right page. Thought I was on it, but I didn't see it. They asked for like 50, 50 some thousand dollars this year, uh, to assist them. I think we've been providing 10. And they asked for the additional 40 some thousand dollars for them to, uh, maintain and police the trails. Yes, here I am. It's, uh, you're in the expense section, it's on page 17. Um, we actually funded them 15,000, excuse me, this year. And they requested $57,760. I reduced that back to 25,000. I don't think we can take that much of an increase. And I, I wanna, I want to be supportive of the trail network and that whole program and I, and I think the county should be. But I also had to look at the revenue side of that. The revenue stream primarily, the permits are sold by the trail, by Spearhead. And the economic benefit from most of that is going into the town of Pennington Gap in the form of sales and meals taxes. So there's not a tremendous amount of revenue that's going to fall back to the county. Again, I want to support the project, but I think there's a limit to what we can do without a revenue stream offsetting that or something that we can tie to local businesses that are outside the incorporation limits of the town that, that we're drawing revenue from.
There's not really anything outside of the town, the trail and the corporate limits.
Right, the trail's in the county, but most of that, and we've known, we've known all along in developing the project that, you know, the, the, the Pennington was going to be the recipient of, of most of the revenues locally on that. And that's, there's no problem with that. We want to see those businesses grow and, and be supported. But, uh, that's, as, as we developed the trail, that was one of the things that when we were building the trail, which we, the town had grant funds, the county had grant funds to do that. But we knew ultimately we were going to turn those systems over to Spearhead to manage. And since they're selling the permits, they derive, derive revenue from that to help police the trails. But now they've come back, uh, at this point, and I think they've gone to the, well, I know they have gone to the other counties as well who have active trails, asking them to provide additional funds for policing and, and maintenance as well. But that, I did reduce that. Uh, I just couldn't, couldn't find the, the justification to lump it up by $42,000 in one year. That's, that was three times what we were already providing. Or we'd, we'd been at four times what we were providing before almost, almost four times.
Uh, Heart of Appalachia asked for 25,000, I mean 2,500 and that's what you budgeted?
Yes. Yes, that, that's same, that's level funding, uh, for the, for the past two years, the last year, the current year. And then I proposed to provide that to them next year. And, and I tell you, I think, uh, I think the regional tourism authority is back on track. I know they're, I mean, it pretty much fell apart a few years ago when, when it just about went completely, it became non-existent for the most part. Uh, but I think they're back on track to try to, try to.
That was what my next question, well, how do you feel about, how, how does the board feel about, uh, how things are going with tourism, the regional tourism? Okay?
Well, I think the signs and stuff look pretty good on the county. And then the, the, uh, one lady that met over was with the visual group.
Yeah.
Had quite a few things to talk about.
Yeah, I feel like, uh, Heart of Appalachia has been a really good.
There's multiple layers and I know that sometimes you think, well, we're, we're, you know, you're putting money into local tourism, you're putting money into regional tourism through Heart of Appalachia, which is, represents the seven coalfield counties. And then we put money into, uh, uh, Southwest Virginia Cultural Heritage Foundation, which is basically Heartwood, Round the Mountain and the, uh, I forget what the other arm of that was, but it.
Artisans.
Artisans group. They're all under that same umbrella and they, they're marketing for all of Southwest Virginia, not just the seven coalfield counties. That's where Heart of Appalachia comes in. They are marketing for the seven coalfield counties. Now, they work in conjunction with, uh, Heartwood, but they also try to work closely with the, all the seven counties. And I, and I think, uh, so I think Aaron was doing a good job. I think Kitty's going to be a really good asset because Kitty Barker, who's now the, the executive director of the, of Heart, of the, Heart of Appalachia, was formerly a state tourism employee. And, uh, you know, she was in here trying to assist you and help you. So she knows the tourism side of things and, and that's been lacking in, in years past. And I'm talking 10, 15 years ago, you had people who did not have experience in tourism, who were trying to do that job. But, but Kitty is experienced and knows the ropes and I think she'll be an asset for our local tourism directors as well.
Riza, I mentioned that, she, she probably will be back in here asking for a little more money.
Okay.
I just think we're going to have to take the bait and scroll this thing out. If it stretches, this is the way it's going to be printed out. If we've got stretched it out a mile long, just start marking down, it is what it is. Hope it stays raw at night. I think we can sit down and take several hours and hopefully save a couple hundred thousand somewhere. Maybe it might be worth the adventure.
And keep in mind now that, you know, pretty much most of all the capital items, and I gave you a list on those previously, all that's been stripped out. There's very little in there in the way of capital items.
Well, I think that's where we need to start adopting some kind of plan on things that we know is going to have to be dealt with sooner or later and try to buy it as we can. But it's, uh, I think that breaking this down, line item, basic line items, only we're going to figure that.
And I don't, Gary was, Gary was making a veiled plea there to get rid of that 2010 truck tonight as he's done in the past, but we just, you know, it's a tough year to try to do that.
Yeah, yeah. He, uh, he's already asked me.
We, we typically try to run them at a minimum, eight years and 10 if we can. And as, well, as you heard there, the truck we bought this year replaced a 2006 model. So that's about the schedule we're on. That's a six-year-old truck. It's just hard to, I know you don't want to spend a lot and, and expenditures haven't been as great. Uh, we had a few months there that things really settled down and it's just been recently that it's, that it's cropped back up.
Dane, that school board item, can, we, we don't have to make an motion on it today, can we? Can we discuss that when we actually get into the budget?
Yeah, you, you take your time on that.
I mean, we, we've got a day or two to think about.
We got another budget day scheduled.
Don't have anything scheduled.
That's what I have my calendar out there, we fix this.
When is the hospital meeting over, is that 25th?
Next Wednesday. Next Wednesday at 3 o'clock.
3:00.
Uh, the, the, uh, hospital authority, uh, is on the agenda. Uh, they will have, not, it's not, wasn't decided completely last night how they're going to approach it. They'll probably have about a 10-minute time slot to, to present their, uh, case. I'm not sure if it's, it's probably not going to be one speaker. They're probably going to approach it from maybe two or three speakers, uh, looking at it, uh, partially from the emergency response side, uh, what the emergency responders are dealing with, the drought, different extended travel time, the wear and tear, extra costs, the potential loss of life, the cause of the distance they're having to travel to get patients who are critical.
Basically, so much the measure of age can come up.
Yeah, uh, that's probably going to be a, a portion of, of the presentation. Some of it may be from the sheriff's side and some of it will be just strictly from the hospital authority in making the case or making the request that, uh, one of the stipulations that the health authority looks for in the application to consider it complete from, uh, the Mountain State Swell merger is that this hospital be reopened. That's, that's the basic request. I know they've been encouraging other people to be there, um, and, you know, this is about getting the hospital reopened. This is not about what's happened in the past, why it closed, who closed it or anything like that. The, the focus and emphasis on this is getting it back open and the need, the need that's there. And that's what we're trying to stress. They, they do have a public expression time, I think, in their meetings. Uh, but, you know, yeah, that's, that's one of the things that is, there's a little bit of concern there. But that's why we want to, you know, get, emphasize that this is to promote reopening the facility, not to rehash anything about the closing, but just getting it back open.
Write that down, Louise.
But that's at 3 o'clock next Wednesday at the Hired Center, Larry Daniken.
So I'm assuming if more than three of, it lets three of show up, but it's for the hospital.
Oh, it's fine to have a group there, you know, they can say.
I just want to make sure because it seems like it's some safety issues.
Yeah, no, it's, it's fine, but, you know, everybody won't be speaking. Uh, it's just, it'll be for moral support.
I just think it's for.
Yeah, it'll be for moral support and to show the health authority that, you know, there's a good contingency of people who are concerned about this and interested in it and support getting it reopened. it and support getting it reopened and support the requests to them.
Next Wednesday, 3 o'clock.
Mr. Chairman, we're going to look at recess dates, look at this budget.